Tuesday, October 20th at 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion to approve, oh, confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The meeting was noticed here at City Hall, the Piggly Wiggly, and Dave's A's Hardware.
So, we don't have all of our city council here, and we... I have team building tonight because we have some absence. All those in favor?
Yes.
All those opposed? Item number three, public comments regarding items which can be...
Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay, item number four, approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Alright.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Everything that we've all been waiting for to talk about, item number five. Discussion regarding the 2016 budget.
So, a couple of items, and I've got a little presentation that I wanted to do based on a number of questions I've gotten over the last, probably two weeks really, about just the city's debt, debt service and things of that nature. But, I guess before that, before I give that presentation, I wanted to know if folks had just any general comments about the budget? Any questions, any concerns? I know there's been a lot of discussion over the last week or so about the road aid shortfall. And I guess for those folks, I think probably everybody in the room probably knows. But just to review, we got our annual road aid allotment, or some folks call it highway money, from the state, and that came in at about $34,000 less than it did last year. So that created a little bit of a hole in the budget of about $34,000 that we're working to kind of shore up. We've got a couple of different sources of funds that we can pull from. Howie's been very gracious and to kind of give his budget a third and fourth scrub, and has come up with, you know, some good suggestions to kind of close that gap. Dan and I have discussed a number of other options internally. I spoke last week with Teresa in regards to any room maybe within the fire budget. So we're still working on that, on that gap at this point. I know Linda has offered up some suggestions too that we're looking at. But I think in short, you know, at the end of the day, we will make that hole again. And it won't result in an increase in taxes beyond what was presented at the preliminary budget. But, you know, at this point, we're still kind of in that holding pattern. Making sure that as the other numbers come in, that the problem isn't as bad, maybe it may not be as bad as we thought it was. If the insurance figures come in better than we thought, if the equalized value figure comes in better than we thought, the problem may take care of itself. So, I only say that so we don't, you know, get too bogged down or get too worried about, you know, how are we going to come up with this last? We've actually got it down to about $19,000 now. So, you know, I just wanted to assure everybody that we're still working on that. And whatever that solution is that we come up with, we'll bring that back to the council and, you know, kind of present that as the revised preliminary budget. But, any thoughts or comments or questions or concerns about anything up to this point?
Briefly.
Briefly? Oh, okay.
Nineteen thousand left.
Yeah, we've come up with about $15,000 worth of adjustments that we can make that won't impact service deliveries or any kind of staffing levels. You know, some of it's reallocation of funds, some of it is just changing the way we kind of do business. But it won't impact service levels. But, so we've got about, like I said, about, probably about 15 to 19,000 left to come up with in that, so.
Have we heard any more about the bus service?
In regards to whether Freedom Graphics would like to participate, they officially gave me word last week that they do not want to participate, that they will not be a partner this time around. Which is what we anticipated and what we kind of built the budget around. So, that's, you know, that doesn't move one way or the other. We built the budget as if they wouldn't be partners, so it didn't change that they, when they said that they didn't want to be this year.
So, can we, it's, would there be that much of a reduction if we took our bus down to one day a week instead of two?
You mean one trip a day?
Yeah.
Well, would it be that much of a reduction in, would it be that much of a savings, is that your question?
Right.
Well, the difficulty with only having one trip a day is that it essentially becomes a one-way ticket.
Correct, how do you get back?
But I was thinking that we were only do, that we had it down to two days that we were doing it.
Two, you mean two trips a day?
Two, no, a week.
No, no, it's two trips every day, five days a week.
What if we reduced that to like three days a week instead of five days a week? Is that gonna, would that produce?
It would, it would be a reduction, likely it would be a reduction. I don't know what that, what that actual impact would be. You know, I, if you look at it in the sense that we're currently paying $25,000, roughly $25,000, and for five days worth of travel, if you figure you cut two days out, is that $10,000 worth of savings? Probably not, but that's, you're not going to get more than that.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want to see the service totally cut. I was just thinking that, I was just thinking if we could maybe reduce it. And then the other thing is, I would like to look into this road tax that...
Oh, the wheel tax?
Or wheel tax, yeah.
That's an idea.
I think that that's, you know, if we had to do that for a year, I don't see, I don't see that it would hurt.
But I don't think that's something that you can do or not do. I think once you do it, you have to, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm not sure. I'm not sure, but I think that it, is it that, does Dan's not here, so? But I think once you, once you're in, you're in. I don't know.
My understanding is that once you, once you would adopt a wheel tax, you would have to then rescind that tax at some point. That would be, that would be my, I mean, in essence, it becomes a user fee. That you would have to, I suppose you could probably put in some sort of sunset date on it.
I don't know, I haven't been asked to look into this, so I can't answer you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's one of those situations too where, at this point in the game too, and I know we've talked about this, we wouldn't even be able to do it for the full year. It'd be, it'd be really for about three quarters of the year. So, although that, that would, it would fill that budget whole, I don't know. I'm confident that we can find approaches within, within the current conditions that we, that we can fix the problem without raising taxes or creating a user fee this year. Next year is a whole different story, but we'll deal next year, next year.
I just want you to know that if you guys decided to do that, I would veto it. Because I feel strongly that we are not going to raise our taxes over 8% and then come back and tax again on a wheel tax for this budget. That doesn't mean that we couldn't think about it for a next budget, but I think it's fair that you know that, what my position is on it. So, so there's no surprises, okay?
So, I mean, like I said, I mean, I'm hopeful and I'm confident that we can, you know, we can fix it within the current conditions and hopefully not have to go that route, you know, like I said this year. I gave you that memo last week that had a couple of different options in it, and some of those options are still being considered. But, you know, if you have feedback, and I know a lot of you have provided me feedback, if you've gotten feedback on that, questions, thoughts, comments, or even other suggestions, you know, certainly, please feel free to pass those along.
Any other, any other thoughts on any of the fun stuff going on?
If not, I did put together a little presentation. This one's a lot shorter than the last one I did. But this is in response, again, to a lot of questions. I have gone around and given that budget presentation that I bored you all with about a month ago. I've given it to about three or four different groups. And, you know, there's been kind of a main focus of a lot of those conversations, spend them on debt service. So I thought maybe because we're all here tonight, well, not all of us, but because we're together tonight and we had the budget conversation, I could give you a little bit of a more drilled down kind of scenario for our debt service. So, oh, let me pass this out, because it's going to be easier to see when it's right in front of you. So what I have here, what we have here and what I've passed out is all of the tax levy supported debt. All of the tax levy supported debt. And when I say tax levy supported debt, what I, that, what that means is that's all debt that is currently on the books with the city of Milton that is paid for through tax levy, through tax dollars collected. Meaning it's not paid for through TIF, it's not paid for through water, wastewater or stormwater, it's paid for through the levy of taxes, through the amount of taxes that we levy. So, right now, we have, looks like about 10, 10 pieces of outstanding debt that are currently on the books that go all the way back to 2007. And, so what I've done is I've kind of outlined those, those 10 pieces of debt and what they are. And just for a little bit of information, GO bond means general obligation bond, and that means that it has a 20-year lifespan. If it says note, that means that it's just a 10-year note. Doesn't mean, but it all counts towards our tax levy. So, at the time that the debt was taken out, all the outstanding debt came to about $11.5 million. The purpose of that debt is varied, from road work to refinancing, to the DPW building, to the library, to Parkview, to City Hall, to PD. There's a lot of different uses that we had within that debt. And you can see that, like I said, some of the debt goes back to 2007, and the most recent piece of debt that we have is the 1.3 million that we use for Parkview and the library. Where things start to get a little bit more interesting is that next column over, where it says outstanding as of December 2016. So that column is what the actual debt outstanding will be at the end of this year. So original, the original amount was 11.4, and you'll see at the end of this year, we'll still be at about 8.6 million. And how those, how that gets paid for in each year is denoted in the next two columns, where it says principal and interest. So in 2000, so for example, in 2016, we're going to pay about a million dollars worth of debt service. And remember, debt service is both principal and interest. So in 2016, we'll pay about a million dollars worth of debt service. About 645,000 of that will go to principal, and about 333,000 of that will go to interest. What, what jump, what may jump out to some of you as you're looking at this is the 2013 GO bond. In 2013, we took out about $2 million to pay for this building in the PD. And you'll notice that in 2016, the amount to be paid, principal has a zero in it. And the reason that is, is that we will not make a principal payment on this building until the year 2020. So, we won't be reducing our debt service at all in this building during that time. And that also goes for the DPW building. So if you look at the 2011 GO bond, you'll see that there's 1.8 million was borrowed, and there's still going to be 1.8 million at the end of 2016. And that's because we will not have made a principal payment on that building as well until 2017. So, what this all means is a couple of things. So that, does anybody have any questions about that table? There's a lot of numbers, a lot of figures on there, but ultimately what it shows is every piece of outstanding debt that we have as a city that's paid for by tax dollars.
Now, you said that the DPW building, the principal is not going to be paid, we're not going to start paying that until 2020?
2017.
2017, and 2020 for the, for this building?
Yep.
Okay.
And why that's important to note, what Linda just said. You probably heard, you probably remember me saying this a lot back in March, and I've said it a bunch since then. But, you know, the important thing to remember when we, as we move forward is when we make a debt service decision, we really must ask ourselves these two questions. Can we do it and should we do it? And those are two very different questions, and oftentimes have two very different answers. But ultimately, I would say that if one of the answers, if you answer no to either one of those questions, then we either shouldn't do it or require some additional research to understand the full consequences of what that decision is. So to Linda's point, we haven't paid any debt service on those two buildings. And we won't for at least a couple of years. What that means is what this graph represents, or what that, what that, how that translates to real life is what this graph represents. This graph shows from 2015 to 2034 on the, on the, the horizontal axis, and then it shows the tax rate on the vertical axis. And that tax rate is based on our mileage rate. So the amount of taxes we pay for debt, how much in tax dollars do we pay goes to pay for our debt service. And what is, what is slightly troubling about this graph is you'll see that the line doesn't really go down very precipitously until about 2025. How I would describe this is, this is really the second, I maybe put these a little out of order. This is really the second question. This is the should we do this? We may have debt capacity, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we should do it. And the should question is what Dan referred to back in March as the affordability question. Can we afford to do this? We might be able to do it, we might legally be able to do it, we might have the money, but it, but it may have an impact on us down the road, and that's, that's what this table shows. And what this basically shows is that for the next 10 years, the amount of taxes we pay to pay for our debt service won't go down very much at all. In fact, they'll go from, they'll actually go, it'll actually go up the next couple of years, slightly, just a slight uptick. And that's based on the staggering in which the debt was secured for the various projects that we have going on in the city. And that means that in 2017, when we make our first principal payment on the DPW building, there'll be a slight bump in our debt service, it'll go up. So, unfortunately, as things fall off, as we pay things off, other things immediately take their place. And that's, that's the way that the debt was structured. So, we'll have to kind of ride that unfortunately high wave for a number of years. So that's the should, go ahead.
I'm just envisioning, I'm envisioning the place where the fire department comes into play.
Sure.
Either the overruns or the new building. And I'm just, I'm looking at that and it isn't fitting.
Well, the overruns would be, the two funding sources would be different. The overruns, which we have funded the last couple of years out of, out of fund balance, would be from, would be separate from this. But the station would be directly linked to this. It would be, it would be directly in this continuum somewhere. What this second line shows kind of starts to add to that end. At least this one's going down nicely. It's going down pretty nicely. What this shows, this is our debt capacity, this is based on a percentage. So on the horizontal axis, we have the number of years. And on the vertical axis, or Y-axis, we have the, our percentage of capacity. So as you can see, when we started this year, we were at 85% of our capacity. We'll likely go down to 79, 73, then 67, then 61. And you'll see the dash line across the middle is right when we get to 50%. And that'll be right about 2020 is when we get to 50%. 50%, there's no magic to 50%. But that's, that's a much better place to be than where we are right now. So that, so, so the fire department, for example, the question, you know, the question can, of when can we fund the fire department? Well, we can, we can fund the fire department, probably in 2018, 2019, like we talked about in March. But the should may change, and that's based on this chart. And that goes for any long-term debt project. That goes for any, any, any project, whether it's the fire department or any new building or any large-scale, any large-scale infrastructure project that's not paid for out of any kind of utilities. Again, this doesn't affect the wastewater treatment facility or any of the things that we're doing with the, with the wellhouses or anything like that, because those are, those are not tax levying debt.
But according to what you have up there, it looks like it would be 2022 that would be the appropriate time.
Well, there's a whole lot more subjectivity that goes into the should as opposed to the can. And that subjectivity is going to be up to this body, whoever's sitting in these seats at the, at the date in which the can question can be checked as a yes. The subjectivity then is what's affordable, what should we do? And again, there's no magic to these numbers. To say that, to say that the tax rate is, that we pay for debt right now is nearly three, there's nothing that says we couldn't go to three and a half. But that's a decision that'll need to be made by this body. What is this body comfortable with as far as what are they willing to put out as a taxable debt? And what are they, what are they not? So, the first one is rather objective. Can we do it? Well, do we have the capacity? Yes, okay, then, then yes, we can. Should we do it is really more this question, and that there is some subjectivity to this. I will point out though, that this, this graph will change on an annual basis based on our overall equalized value. As equalized value goes up, this, this chart will dip quicker and faster and more, at a larger rate. And same with this one as well. So as our value increases, we'll see these two debt graphs dip quicker.
So the can looks better.
Yes, however, however, if our value goes down, then this will stay flat or may go up. So like last year, for example, when we lost all that value in the community, that hurt these two. It caused those numbers to jump up. But this year, when our value increased, these numbers went down faster. So, it'll fluctuate slightly each year. We hope that we're always increasing in value. Things like the QuickTrip, things like Charter NEX, things like Bonnie Plants, those things all help make this number go down faster. But those numbers are not guaranteed, and they're somewhat out of our, out of our control to a certain degree, so. So that is my extremely insightful and boring presentation on debt service. But it's a question that continues to come up over and over and over again. And I will say, and I will say this, and I've said it on a number of occasions, if, you know, after being here for 13 months and looking back at, at, you know, kind of all the decisions, when you look back at, at this table, you know, there's a lot of stuff that was done, a lot of stuff done over the last five years. I will say, none of those decisions were bad decisions. None of those decisions were wrong, I guess. But, in order to make those decisions, you know, we are, we are where we are today. And that's okay. We have, we have to pay, we have to invest in ourselves in order to continue to move forward. We want to be the change that, you know, we need to be the change that we want to see. So that's, it's okay. None of these decisions are wrong. But, it helps to put it in context as to, as we look down in the future, you know, why we may be limited in some ways. And this, this is why we are maybe limited on some decisions in the future. Again, not that it's bad, and not that we can't do things in the future, but we will be limited, and it's because of these actions. And these actions are good actions. We have this lovely building. We've got, you know, the library's on its way. Every council meeting, I think we talk about how many positive comments we've gotten about Parkview. I'm sure the guys at DPW are much happier in that building than they were in the, in the old one. And some of those 2007 notes, or bonds, I'm sorry, you know, those are 20-year bonds, those paid for a lot of the roads that we drive on every day. A lot of the roads out in the TIF districts, and I know I mentioned this last week, but, and Linda mentioned this in Public Works. We are given our highway aid based on the amount of money we spend on roads. So the more you spend, the more they give you. Unfortunately, it's never a dollar for dollar. You know, it's kind of one of those, it's $4.99 if you buy this, but we'll give you two for eight. Well, you actually still end up spending three more dollars, but, you know. So back in 2000, so six years ago in 2009, we spent $4 million on roadway projects. Four million bucks. Last year, we spent 1.5 million. And that's, to Howie's point, that's why we don't have that many roads that are in bad shape anymore, because we invested in ourselves. We invested in our infrastructure and in our community, and we have nice things to show for it. I can tell you, you know, a lot of communities don't have, can't say that. So again, these decisions aren't wrong, and I don't want anybody to feel that way or think that way, or the newspaper to say that. But I just want, I want to provide this as context as to when people say, "Oh, boy, you know, we should do this, or we should do that, or why can't we do this?" Well, you know, these are some of the reasons.
Well, and if you remember, our infrastructure, but particularly our buildings, for many years, our previous councils delayed it. And this is one of the reasons, because it costs money to invest in your city. I think we are a much better city for all of our investments, but it does give us a more global context when we, when we think about what are projects that we want to do? Can we do it? Should we do it? And what does a debt structure look like? I was on the councils that voted for these things, like many of you were, and I'm, I'm very happy with how we invested. I don't think I fully understood the whole principal thing, that how long we were going to go out without paying down principal, but that's my responsibility to learn more about it. Now I understand quite a bit about it. And I think you all probably do too, because I think when you vote on things, it's easy to vote on what's in front of you. But now we, we have this big picture to look at. So, thank you, Al, for putting that together.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Any other questions? Moving along. Item number six, discussion and possible approval of 2016 budget public hearing notice language.
And I know we talked about this last, last meeting, but I'd like to reiterate the, the item that is up for approval this evening is the, is the publication that is required by state statutes that we publish in the newspapers, so folks know, you know, when the budget is going to be, and when the public hearing is going to be, and when we hope to adopt it. But the important piece of that is to note that the budget can change. It can change from what is published in the newspaper. It can go down, and it can go up. We don't want to see it go up, but it can. So I just want people to be aware of that, folks to be, understand that just because you're approving this language tonight does not mean that we are approving the budget as published. It's only the start of the process. And so I just want everybody to be comfortable with that. And if you have questions or concerns, or that makes you feel a little icky, let me know, and we can talk more about it or ask Mark. But that's all it is. We did it last year, and the year before, and the year before, and the year before. But I just want people to kind of know what, you know, what we're approving tonight.
Do I have an emotion? Yes, I have a lot of emotions tonight. Do I have a motion to approve on public budget hearing notice for the city of Milton? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further questions or discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries, and we will be publishing our notice. Item number seven, discussion and possible action to approve operator licenses.
Okay, so this is an item that would normally go to personnel and finance first, but I have a good number of operators, because QuickTrip is getting ready to open their doors, and so I didn't want them to have to wait an extra month, so that's why I'm bringing the operators directly to council. Everyone that's on listed there has gone through the background check. They've all completed their beverage server training. So I would recommend approval of these licenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number eight. This is our Halloween proclamation. Where is that?
It's down below.
Keep scrolling. And then the next one. Yes, but I can't find them. I can't find my copy. Sure. This is like one of the few fun things I actually get to do here. Okay. "Whereas, the city of Milton wishes a safe and festive Halloween celebration for its citizens and encourages part..." citizens and encourages participation in the gayety of this holiday by both young and old, and whereas miniature ghosts, goblins, witches and other mysterious creatures emerge each year on October 31st, and whereas they ring doorbells of their neighborhood and friends to extort goodies, and whereas the safety of these small creatures is assured by an accompanying adult and is a source of amusement and good cheer for both the very young and the older people whom they visit and entertain. Whereas Ioneesa Welsh, Mayor of the City of Milton, proclaims Saturday, October 31st, 2015, Halloween in the City of Milton. Therefore, let it be known that Saturday, October 31st, 2015 shall be known as Halloween Trick or Treat Day and the celebration will be observed between the hours of 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. And I will be signing this the 20th day of October 2015. They have to prove it? I can't just make proclamations? They actually have to make a motion to approve it?
Yeah.
Okay, are you guys gonna, are you gonna let us trick or treat this year?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? We have trick or treat in the City of Milton this year. Oh my gosh.
Send them over because they're very entertaining.
All the power we are giving to the city council. Item number nine, discussion and possible action to approve the purchase of the Orthophosphorus Analyzer for the wastewater treatment plant. I'm sure this is not as exciting as Halloween. Howie?
Nope, not as exciting, just expensive. Part of our permit requirements for the treatment plant are that we have to have 24-hour a day phosphorus analysis. So since this purchase is over $10,000, our purchase policy requires the city council approval. And this is below the, what we had originally budgeted for a capital amount. And the treatment plant guys have worked with this company and they were the lowest of three bids.
Any questions?
You're happy to work with this outfit?
Is there a motion to approve the purchase of the Orthophosphorus Analyzer? Is there a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number 10, discussion and possible action to approve engagement letter to assist with completion of PSC water rate study. Nobody wants to talk about this, do they?
I could talk about this in Dan's absence. I probably won't be able to talk about it as intelligently as he would, but what this engagement letter would allow us to do is to work with Hawkins Ash CPAs. They are the company that we work for whenever we're taking out major borrowing activities. We've worked with them a couple of times even since I've been here. So the approval of this engagement letter would allow us to work with Hawkins Ash CPAs to assist with the completion of the PSC's application to increase the water rates. And the request would be in regards to the $2.8 million borrowing that was approved back in August of this year for those major water-related projects, the booster station, replacement of well. Number two, the extension of the main along West Madison and the extension of the main along Janesville Street. So this is simply the engagement letter that will allow us to work with them.
Is there any questions? Do I have a motion to approve this? Is there a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. All right. Item number 11, our next meeting date is Tuesday, November 3rd, 2015. Are there any general items? All right, seeing none.
I get it now.
Item number 14, mayor and elder person reports. Dave, anything? Maxine? Linda? Speak now, go.
I just want to remind everybody that this weekend is the second weekend for this year's prairie seed collection at Crossridge. We did have some people in attendance last weekend and we have a lot more seed to be collected. So if you wish to participate, I would certainly encourage you to, if you have not ever done this before, we're meeting at Crossridge Park on Saturday and Sunday from 9 to 2. And you need to just dress for the weather. And the Brock County Conservationists will also be there with us, so it's a very educational day also. And then I would also just mention that the Chamber has their Malt and Hops this weekend and that is at the Gathering Place. You might still be able to get tickets if you, I'm not 100% sure about that, but if you call the Chamber, they will give you that direction. And there is on November 14th at the Gathering Place, there is Murder on the Menu. It's a mystery dinner and a theater show that's at the Gathering Place sponsored by the Chamber.
What's the date on that again?
That is November 14th.
Do you have any? Okay, mayor reports. I just want to let everybody know that the Milton Youth Coalition had a broad sale at the football game last Friday and we raised over $300. That was great. On Thursday of this week, we're going to be handing out the bullying t-shirts, the anti-bullying awareness t-shirts, safe in your school, safe in your community, live in the Milton Way. And everybody at Northside and the middle school is going to be getting a free t-shirt. So that's pretty cool. The other thing is, I don't know if you all noticed, and I don't know if I'm going to take away Howie's thunder, but those railroad tracks on Parkview are rocking. They are, I like love driving over them, it's so nice. So thank you railroad people for getting those railroad tracks fixed, even though it took a really long time. And that's all I have. Anybody else? No? Okay, city administrator.
Couple of things, I think I've done my best to try to keep everybody in the loop on the cryptosporidium occurrence. I want to thank the Courier for publishing the article today that kind of articulated, I'll say articulated, I don't want to say clarified, articulated the information that is out there in an accurate way. We unfortunately had some, a lot of misreporting that happened today, throughout the day that caused kind of a bit of a flurry. The Courier was not one of those folks, but there was some, some bad intel got out there and, you know, people were saying that there was 15 kids with it and 20 kids with it. And at this point, what we know is that there are two confirmed cases of it. And both of these young folks who have confirmed cases, along with the other 18 that are showing symptoms, are all young folks who participated in a similar activity over the course of the last 10 days. What's important to note when having conversations with people of the public is that we have tested the water and the water has shown that there is no presence of any bacteriological influence in it, any E. coli. And two, if it was in our water source, it would be almost impossible to contain that occurrence to simply two to 20 young folks in the same high school. It would be widespread throughout the community. So it's likely a situation in which these young folks were participating in a like activity in which they were exposed to this all at the same time or at least transmitted to each other while participating in that activity. So the good news is that, you know, we were on top of it right away from our end. Howie first brought it to my attention yesterday afternoon and already had confirmed that it wasn't from our water source. We did another test yesterday. We were hoping to get those results back today, but they didn't come in time for the date to close, so we'll have those tomorrow morning. But we already know based on the results that came out last week, Thursday, that all of these young folks had already been shown symptoms of this. The test that showed up last week, or that was, came through last week, Thursday, showed that their water was clean. So I guess what I'm trying to say is it's very unlikely that it came from the Milton water source. And when I say very unlikely, I say 99.999%.
And I drink a lot of water, I've been drinking a lot of water.
So, you know, it was just, there was a lot of, as these things often do, they sometimes take on a life of their own.
And it scares people. I mean, it scares people when kids get sick.
So again, thanks to the Courier. I think you guys were the only ones that batted a thousand on this.
And thanks for our water guys.
What's that? Yes, yeah, yeah. So that's the cryptosporidium. It was a request that I give an update on the bowling alley. What I know at this time is that the bowling alley has been, has attempted to be sold. They have not been able to find a qualified or suitable buyer on the open market. So it is my understanding that they will be going to auction. That is what I've been informed. I've tried to make contact with the bowling owners themselves to confirm this, but I haven't been able to make contact with them. So I've heard this from, I heard that they are going to auction through a party who is a potential interested buyer in the bowling alley. So they have a potential interested buyer. That interested buyer would like, obviously is buying it under the pretense that they will have a liquor license and would like to reopen at least a bar/restaurant establishment in that bowling alley. And beyond that, I don't really know the details of what their business plan is. So regardless or irrespective of all of that, back in August, July? August, we had our hearings or discussions about the alcohol licenses. And if everybody remembers, back during those discussions, the owner of the bowling alley, you know, addressed the council and said that he would like to be granted a license and he would like 90 days in order to secure a new user or purchaser of that establishment with that license. And if he didn't, then he would relinquish that license. Those 90 days are set to expire on October 31st, so next week. And I would guesstimate that it's highly unlikely that he will have a user or owner by October 31st. So at that point, then, the council would need to make a decision in order to start the revocation process if they chose to do that. His license would stick, if they choose not to do that, his license will stick with him up until the time of renewal next year. If folks have questions about the revocation process, Mark and I can answer those either tonight or in a separate correspondence, but I kind of wanted to give an update on that as to where we're at. At this time, we don't have any other requests. Nobody's come to us and asked, hey, you know, what's going on with that bowling alley? Or hey, do you have an extra license hanging around? So we're not aware of anybody, but there might be people who are out there waiting because they are waiting for the 90 days. I can't speak to any of those things, but that's the pieces of information that I know at this time, that there is not a, at this time, it's still under the ownership of the previous owner and that he is still attempting to sell it, whether it be through an arms-length transaction or through an auction, is yet to be determined.
So the license is going with the building and not the current owner? Is that what I am to understand?
Yeah, well, they would need to apply again for a change and we would need to grant it to them, yeah.
A license is granted to a particular person at a particular location, so that owner can't take it somewhere else.
Correct.
So would it be prudent to put a timeframe on so this doesn't expire at the end of never?
Yeah. Well, it would expire by the nature of the permit, it would expire within one year. So it would expire next summer. But if the council would like to, again, revisit this or start the revocation process if there's not a new owner or tenant, you know, we would just need to know that so we could start that process. It is a little, I mean, it is a process. It would require a hearing of sorts, Mark, is that correct?
Well, it would, but I just advise that this isn't the appropriate time to discuss it, this is just a report time. So if you wanted to discuss it, I would recommend having it put on the agenda for the next meeting.
Is there a date for that auction?
I'm not aware of a date, no, no.
So I wonder if we could, we can monitor it in the future, any of the council members or, you know, city staff can put this on the agenda and we can certainly revisit it and discuss it.
If you could revisit it, that would be excellent because I'm anticipating. I'm anticipating that there will be progress?
Yeah, I sure hope so as well. And once I can speak directly to the owner and start to speak with a little bit more specificity or at least, you know, at least firsthand, he may be demonstrating progress that we're not even aware of. But I think that's ultimately going to be up to this body to decide then. What constitutes progress?
I think if we knew a date of when the sale was going to, we could kind of go from that way. So in case this fellow does buy it and turn it into a bar and a restaurant, then we wouldn't have to do anything except change the license.
Correct.
But if we don't have a date.
Would it be reasonable for you to discuss with the owner, when you can catch him, to pick a date that he will revisit with us?
Yep.
Sure. You want him to come and visit the council and make a report?
We'd sure love to know what's going on.
We did a very similar thing with Clicks. If folks remember back last year, we did a similar sort of thing, had them come in and give us kind of status updates.
Okay, joint fire, nope. Chief of Police?
Had a couple of people come see me at my coffee at Milton Family Restaurant last week. And after those couple of people had their conversations, I worked the restaurant, so.
Good job.
Folks were very gracious, having me interrupt their breakfast and had great conversations. So it was an excellent event, once again. So I'm going to continue because I think this is a great way for people in the community to get to know me a little bit. So that will continue. The other thing I just want to make note of in a public forum, that with Halloween next week, I really want to remind the public that that is a night to be very, very aware when they're driving around the city. Lots of children in the dark, perhaps not looking as diligently both ways when they cross streets and such. So it's going to be a night that will have lots of, lots of activity and just want to remind folks to be real careful that night. That's all I had.
City Clerk Deputy Treasurer. Director of Public Works. Are we done with? Yeah, that's exactly what I was trying to think of. Brush pickup. But sludge is done too? That's a great relief. Okay, Director of the Library.
There will be a fundraising auction on November 7th, Saturday, for the renovation. It starts at 1:00 PM and that is silent auction. There'll be a 50/50 raffle, a meat raffle, and then the live auction at 4 o'clock.
Do you know, are you going to like put some pictures up on the internet so?
Yes, we'll be announcing, and that's a point I wanted to make too. If anybody has anything they want to donate to the auction, we're still taking donations. You can contact me and we will, yeah, be promoting and publicizing what the items are going to be, so.
Really excited because you usually, Bob Johnson's doing it?
Yes, the Adreside Auction is doing it, yeah, for us. So we're really excited about it.
Buy your Christmas presents early.
Yeah, come and bring money, that's right. Thanks.
Okay, we know where our Finance Director is and we will not speak of that.
His update was co-cop.
Who wants to be Teresa? Maxine?
Consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, Prayer 1, Prayer G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved regarding a claim against the city. in which it is or is likely to become involved regarding a claim against the city.
All those in favor? All those opposed?